Hello and welcome to the Tuesday, October 14th, meeting of the Air Planning Board. This meeting hearing of the Air Planning Board will be held in person at the location provided on this note. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom meeting ID 978-772-8220 or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Danny Ruiz, Town Planner, at D R U I Z at air dot M A dot U S or 978-772-8220 extension 144 prior to the meeting. First item of the business is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any modifications they want to suggest? We're good. Do you have a motion for the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. First item of business, a public meeting for 35 to 37 Sandy Pond Road. Do we have an applicant before us? Oh, could you come up to the table, please? Hi and welcome. And if you would introduce yourselves, name and address?
Andrea Greco.
Jeffrey Greco.
Thirty-seven Sandy.
Thirty-seven Sandy Pond Road.
Pleasure to meet you. Danny, could you walk us through this, please?
Yes, so thirty-seven Sandy Pond Road is this existing house right here. These two lots right here are the two lots that went before the ZDA for the duplexes a few years back. And part of this process is to have this parcel that's being created, parcel A. It's going to be added to this parcel of the existing parcel for thirty-seven. Both parcels meet the requirements of all of the zoning, all of the zoning requirements for this, for the zone of Residence A2, meets all the square footage, all of the frontage depth, you know, minimum side yard, setbacks and stuff like that. So this, this A and R is a pretty straightforward one.
So that's the only thing that's happening is these two pieces are being combined to make a lot?
Yeah.
Does the board have any questions?
No.
Does the applicant have anything to say? No. It's pretty straightforward. Alright. I move that we, what's the, endorse, endorse the A and R for thirty-five or thirty-seven Sandy Pond Road, map twenty-eight parcel one fifty-one and map twenty-eight dash ninety-three and one fifty-one.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie? Yes.
Chair votes aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Have your luck.
Want to sign it? So I'll be, I'll have this signed and then I'll be in contact with Kevin just to let him know that this is ready and then that way you guys can have it recorded.
Perfect. Thank you. I was gonna ask that.
Yep.
And we have the continued public hearing for twelve Willow Road. Do we have representatives for twelve Willow? Yeah, I thought we did. Good. Lim Hut, and I forget your name, sir.
Jim Basile.
Kim, okay. Good to meet you, Jim. Danny, if you would lead us on this.
Yes. So the applicant had requested a continuance at the last meeting so that they could get through the Conservation Commission as well as address the open comments that they had from the departmental review. The applicant did address all of the comments from the departmental review. The DPW did sign off that they were all set with comments. Conservation Commission was also, had also felt that there were addressed except for one item, which I will ask Heather to come up and discuss.
And this won't be any news to Jim and Lim Hut, right? Okay, good.
Just happened to be on Thursday. So the Conservation Commission and specifically myself have some outstanding questions in regards to the work within the riverfront on the project. I have a call into DEP. She did call me back today. I missed that call, called her back, missed it. So we're playing phone tag right now. So I should have that answer shortly. It's just to verify that the work that they're saying they're doing qualifies under the act.
Okay.
The commission is fine with that. So we continued our meeting, that hearing until our next meeting, which is next Thursday. But once we have that clarification, as long as everything goes with what the applicant is saying, then we should be fine.
And this works in the way so that once, because Conservation now meets before us, which helps us so they'll be able to, once I know that they've already addressed all the comments and they can close their hearing, then we can move on on the 28th. We'll also be able to do the same.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
I'll just turn over to Jim to have him walk through the changes that occurred.
Okay, great.
So again, for the record, Jim Basile, Goldsmith Press and Ringwall. The three major changes that I just kind of point out is on the easterly limits of the pavement. After conversation with Heather and the Conservation Commission, they suggested that we install a modular block retaining wall in that area so that it would reduce the amount of grading within the fifty-foot no disturber buffer zone of the bordering vegetate wetland. We did look into that and it is a great idea that definitely minimizes our grading in there. So we did go ahead and do that, did slightly bump out the pavement area just so that we could provide a shoulder for the guardrail as well as a little bit of more safety factor for trucks that are turning in that area. But ultimately it did reduce the disturbance in the buffer zone like we were intending. And our intent of reducing the degraded riverfront area was also met. So that's the modular block wall. Further in the southeast corner, in the previous plan, we had the dumpster pad kind of off to the right-hand side a little bit more, but we reconfigured it so that it now falls within the limit of pavement. This allowed us to tighten up the grading along the limit so that we could reduce the amount of clearing between the development and the property line. And then the last thing is we had had our survey team go out and locate trees that are six-inch diameter and larger within the resource area that would need to be removed as far as the development. There was some twenty trees, so now we had relayed that to our landscape architect so that they could provide trees and shrubs in compliance with the town policy. So we have those laid out on the landscaping plans, but we also have the trees being removed shown on one of our sheets. I think those are the major changes in the plan.
I guess very quick, Lim Hut, Tiv, GPR as well. Just very brief, because we had a conversation about it during the sidewalk itself. You know, you guys mentioned that we like to see planting along where we're taking out along the back wall there. You know, we did provide, with the landscape architect with directions, provide a mitigated compensatory tree planting along that area on top of the retaining wall itself, because you know, we figured, you know, we want to try to get it as high as we can. So we did that.
So, that being said, we're happy to answer any additional questions.
So we anticipate that the next meeting, you may have a decision before us for this, and that would include the input from the results of the Conservation Commission meeting on Thursday.
Yep, that is correct.
Do my board colleagues have questions?
Is there a detail on that modular block wall? I, so what?
It's to be designed by others. I think it's tallest, it's eleven feet, but that's going to be sourced out to someone else to design the structure, because it's a structural wall, so.
So it is going to be a structural wall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and that requires a building permit, structural engineer and all that.
Got it. Okay. Just curious how big it was going to be, so. So instead of going down the slope and regrading the whole slope, you're basically saying we're going to try to leave as much as possible untouched, build up this retaining wall?
That's exactly it. And ultimately it is more cost, but it is a, you know, if you're looking at it from an alternative analysis, because we're working within the riverfront.
It is an alternative analysis that makes sense to do, because it does save more trees and limit our disturbance itself, so.
Ultimately, it's a good idea.
Yeah, it looks good. Anyone else?
Yep.
Would anyone from the public like to ask a question or make a comment regarding twelve Willow?
Anyone on Zoom?
No. Hearing none?
I don't see anybody on Zoom.
Alright. Hearing none, I'm going to make a motion for a continuance of the public hearing for twelve Willow Road, map twenty-three parcel twenty-six. Whoa, yes, Lim Hut, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Cut you off, brother. Go for it, go for it, man.
Just wanted to bring you to the top. I do want to ask, is this an appropriate time to talk about the waiver request?
Because if you, yeah, we can.
Are you ready?
We can talk about the waiver.
Yeah, what do you got for us?
The one, the one problem is Matt's not here. We would have, most likely would have spoken about it during the decision. That's so, I didn't account for having him, to have him here for that discussion yet. Because that, that's the biggest one, is that stormwater one, which he's not here for. Yeah, he did say that he was going to be joining, but he's not on right now. I think we can discuss it during the decision.
Okay.
While it's right now.
Would it be possible to discuss all the other waivers at the riverfront?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's fine. Alright. So the first waiver that they're requesting is from Site Plan Regulation Section 4E3, "Provide off-street parking accommodations within the site plan application in compliance with local requirements." Request a waiver, request to waive the light industrial use parking requirement for the proposed development. "This site is an established facility that has thirty-three employees and with the proposed expansion, parking needs are not anticipated to exceed fifty. Fifty-seven parking spaces are being provided and would seem to provide parking beyond the business needs, should it ever be needed, in accordance with the waiver requirements, plan meets conditions A through D of the zoning bylaw nine point one point eight." So on this one, I think it's, it makes sense for this waiver request that they're asking for.
Yeah.
It reduces, you know, I know as a collective, as a town, we're all looking at ways to reduce how much the parking requirements we have, reducing impervious area as well as, you know, for this one, they do know that they're going to be capped at fifty, fifty employees. They're not going to be going more, any more than that, based on, this is the max buildout at this point, which is the addition that they're putting on. So I think this is a reasonable request. It's only seven spaces.
So the, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
It says fifty-seven spaces are being provided. What's the requirement?
Oh, I mean, it's sixty, it's right here, let me just.
Oh, and the table, okay.
Parking components, so. Right, that's.
What's the waiver?
It was originally.
I think this is from when we were discussing with the building commissioner about.
Oh, that's what it was. Remember when we had the discussion initially with Mike about the use? That's what it was.
So it's a light industrial use, right?
Yeah, so this, there was a. So this was the potential that, so the applicant had approached Mike about potential future.
Building Commissioner of the building.
Yes, oh, sorry. The building commissioner about a potential future use within the building, which would have needed an additional, which would have needed additional parking spaces.
But.
But there was a determination that that did not, from Mike, from the building commissioner, that that's not the use that is allowed, or not that it was allowed, but.
I think, I believe what Mike had determined was that the existing use for the existing building encompasses all the various storage, light manufacturing that covers under the industrial zoning district. Due to that, the expansion or the addition would be an extension or accessory to the existing.
To that original use.
Therefore, it does not have to be classified as something else, rather it's more of an accessory. That's the determination.
But what does it do with the count?
Because it would have, had, had the use not been an accessory, it would have increased how many parking spaces.
So they don't need the waiver.
So they don't.
You want to drop the waiver?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why, so.
As long as the applicant has to drop it.
The applicant come here tonight to request that the waiver be not requested.
To be withdrawn.
To be withdrawn.
Withdraw without prejudice.
Yes.
So that's why, so when I write up the decision, it won't be included.
So they'll take it off the plan, then?
Yes.
It'll be off the plan.
That'll, that'll be updated, that'll have to be updated as well.
It's just have to be discussed and brought up, because similar to what we asked of the building commissioner, the memo regarding the property itself and the mixed use and, you know, the extension of the accessory use get noted somehow and tied to the property. We just want to make sure that in the future, this issue doesn't.
So they're going to have to record that decision from Mike, building commissioner or whatever.
So it'll be referenced in the, in the decision.
Okay. Alright, that's what I had on that question. So the table is correct?
So the table is correct. The next one, which is the Section 4F3, "Provide parking, bicycle parking accommodations within the site plan application. The site is an established manufacturing facility with a long operational history. The workforce has not historically used bicycles as a mode of transportation to this location. The site is located in industrial zone with limited access to bicycle infrastructure and no proximate residential neighborhoods that would reasonably support bike commuting. Given these conditions, we believe the construction of the bike parking facilities would not serve a practical purpose and would result in the installation of underutilized infrastructure." One thing, yes, so, so one thing that I would raise on this one. I do understand that this would, you know, installing something that may not be used, but it is something that I know we've, has been raised by the board as well, that, you know, we keep getting waiver requests on this, and it's something that the town is trying to promote. So I think, in my opinion, I'd say this waiver is not, I would not grant this waiver.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Is this out of term?
No, it's not. Please go ahead. Nope, please go ahead.
When I picture infrastructure, I'm picturing that metal, a metal tubing thing that goes like this.
Yes, exactly.
It's just cemented into the, I don't feel like, I mean, I'm not an architect or an engineer, but I don't feel like it's a huge lift in the scheme of most of the projects we talk about. And there may not be like biking paths around here, but I actually, looking at my friend Ben in the back, used to ride my bike to my place of employment that didn't have any infrastructure. And I now don't right now, but sometimes it's nice to have a place just to lock up your bike. And I don't know that it's a huge lift, so I get that a lot of people aren't using it, but.
So if I may, we did talk to the applicant about that.
Yeah.
They allow the employees to bring their bike inside the building.
That's what I was going to ask.
Do you want to read the section of pedestrian bicycle circulation safety that they're asking for the, I think, I think I got it right here, right? So it's four.
F3.
F3. So that, all that says is the location and characteristics of any bicycle facilities such as racks, storage areas, et cetera.
Yeah, and it's, so the, the reference is, he's referencing this, but it actually should be the section from the zoning bylaw from Section nine point one point nine, which is bike, bicycle accommodations.
Okay.
So do accommodations count if they have room in their building to hold the bicycle?
Not under the bylaw.
It's a storage area. So, to clarify, that is not, that's the wrong reference.
Correct.
Geez, that's two for two.
What was that, nine, what?
Nine point one point nine, which is bicycle accommodations. Or nine point one point eight.
I'm going to comment too, Chair.
Go ahead.
I think with e-bikes, the distance of commuting is increasing. I see, I see cyclists on occasion going down Central Ave all the way to Catania Oils. I think that, and there is, there is a residential, there's actually a number of homes right there on Willow.
Up in the back.
And, yeah, that are right through the trees. Certainly would make a nice commute for somebody there.
Let me ask the applicant something. Would you prefer to withdraw the request or for us to vote on the request?
We'll just go ahead and withdraw it.
Okay, thank you. What else do we have?
Okay, so.
It's moot now.
It's moot now.
It's done.
Moot now. Like you said, two for two.
So the, so there's two others which are the stormwater ones.
Want to wait till next meeting for those?
We can discuss the second one, the first one, which is Section 2.8C1G, which is talking about redevelopment versus, and TSS removal and all that. That one I would rather wait until we have Matt's opinion on that one and have him here able to discuss, which we'll make sure he's at the next meeting for that. Stormwater regulations 2.10B1, this is a typical one that we do receive for private developments. This is the requirement that the, the applicant provide the town with a easement on their stormwater so that the town would be able to take care of this. This is a requirement we have for subdivisions, so that once, you know, the project is built and hasn't been turned over to the town just yet, the town can then take, take care of that easement and the stormwater. So for typical, for private developments, we don't require this.
With private developments, of course, the private party is responsible for maintaining the stormwater and, I think, annual reports?
Yes. So as part of the decision, we would require yearly inspection reports, which is part of the operation and maintenance plan. Those logs and the inspection from a professional, a licensed professional on the whole system would be submitted to us in October.
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Through the chair, I have a preference to wait for Matt on this one as well, and the DPW.
On this one?
Yeah. I'd rather have them clarify that they don't need these. Is that what we're saying?
No, 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 this is private, this is not.
Let's waive this one.
We don't, we don't do this on private properties. We only do this on subdivisions, and that is, that is the history.
Because we have the infrastructure.
That is because of the infrastructure, it's for us to take care of. This was written this way so that it would cover all projects in, in a case that, you know, for some reason, it was better, the DPW felt that it would be better for them to request the waiver than to just have them request that they get the easement. So it's an automatic, and then they request the waiver if it's not necessary. So in this occasion, which we don't require on private properties, because the town does not want to take care of the stormwater system, we, we always provide this waiver.
Good. Thank you.
Julie, Nathan? Alright, I'd like to make a motion then. I want to accept, honor the waiver request for stormwater regulation Section 2.10B-1.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Alright, so that's the waivers we can cover tonight, and then.
The other one we'll have to.
Wait till next, okay.
Which we can, you know, I'll have it written into the decision and then we'll discuss it when Matt's here.
Okay, great. I think we have a motion for a continuance. Wait, yes, come on.
You have to comment this from the public?
Yeah, I, yep.
I just had a, oh, sorry, Rachel, because there are thirty ground harm. I was just wondering, is this considered an amendment to the agenda? Just because I don't think that you mentioned that you would be discussing this on the agenda.
So let me clarify on how the agenda works.
I just wanted to bring it up just in case there are like difficulties down the road. If it's good, then it's good, but I just.
Yeah, no, it's, it's actually good, so.
Okay.
With Lincoln Hill, that's the only project we were doing that for, so that every time there was a meeting, people would specifically know what we were discussing. With smaller projects, we don't do that.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Kindness to Lincoln Hills and the town interest.
I'm going to continue with my motion. Alright, I make a motion to continue, wait, for the continuance, right? For continue the public hearing for twelve Willow Road to our next meeting on October 28th.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Okay, we'll continue at the next meeting.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone coming up to represent?
They're on Zoom.
Okay, they're on Zoom. We've got the fields.
So DPW already cleared, yeah. I did just say.
Never mind.
So Representative, the applicant for Zero High Street are with us on Zoom, is that correct?
Yes.
Yep, there's Janet.
I'm here. Michael's here too.
So we have a decision, we have decisions for us for the stormwater permit, inclusionary housing and stormwater permit in the site plan review, correct? What, do you think the wisest thing is to start with the special conditions across all, at least two of them, maybe all?
So I think we should first go with the open space residential development site plan approval and inclusionary housing decision. So with this one, we will go through the findings, because this one has some different findings. We can talk about the waiver request, which we're already voted on. The, the conditions within this one, as we've discussed before, these are general conditions, they're on, we have them for every project, so there's, they're the same, nothing has changed within these, within these decisions. So I think the first thing we can kind of discuss is this one. We can discuss the findings and then waivers and then kind of go to the stormwater, do the same thing, and then we can get into the meat of the stuff, which is the special conditions.
And the waivers, we've already done the waiver request, voted on those, so we just, okay, we just acknowledge that, okay. So what we should do is discuss the findings? And how do we proceed? Just read them one by one, explain?
Yes.
So the first finding is, number one, the open space residential development application submission under Section 10.1.2. B states, quote, "If subdivision approval is not required because a new roadway is not proposed, the applicant may nevertheless, nevertheless apply for ORSOD approval under the section. In such case, the application shall be subject to site plan review as described in subsection 320-3.5. This application does not propose a new right-of-way and therefore does not need a subdivision approval." I think that's pretty straightforward. The site plan contains, number two, the site plan contains a design that has provided the foundations for the Air Planning Board to determine that the requirements, standards and guidelines of the Town and Air Site Plan Regulations, subsection 320-3.5.4 of the Arizona bylaws have been met in a satisfactory manner. Everyone on board with this? I want to talk to my colleague, good. Number three, the Air Planning Board has determined that the applicant has demonstrated compliance with the standard for grading and clearing the proposed site forth, site set forth within subsection 320-9.6.2D.
That is our land and clear.
That's the land and clearance that we've been talking about, okay. Number four, the planning board has determined the proposed yield plan meets the requirements under Section 10.1.4. D. The planning board has determined thirty-four units are the maximum base allowable units.
Is that correct?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I go back to three?
Okay.
Would it make sense for us to put the heading of that section as well as the zoning? Add the language of the actual heading?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. So, you know, whatever that section is, we got it, the text of the section plus the digits that represent.
Oh, I see.
Yes.
That's helpful.
Yeah, so that, so you know exactly what the section is.
Yeah, that's good.
I can do that.
Okay, so this is, we're going to get, this is a draft, we're finishing up right now.
Yep, this is a draft, and the final, just like we typically do, I'll, I'll put in the final comments and then have Jonathan sign the final version. It'll get signed by Jonathan, stamped in with the town clerk.
Thanks.
Alright, number five, the planning board has determined the proposed open space meets the required fifty percent of open space set forth in Section 10.1.3. C. Alright, number five, the planning board has determined the proposed open space meets the required fifty percent of open space set forth in section ten point one point three point C. The applicant is proposing to provide six point seven acres of wooded open space and an additional one point two seven acres where the stormwater sister, system is situated. There will be a total of eight point zero five acres of protected open space under conservation restriction. Number six, the planning board has determined the applicant is meeting the ten percent affordable housing requirement set under section sec, section ten point three point three of the inclusionary housing bylaw. The applicant is proposing three affordable units within the development. And finally, number seven, the project site consists of parcel ID twenty seven dash twenty eight, thirty, forty one, sixty five, seventy, one eighty nine, two thirteen. Containing more or less thirteen point six seven acres located within Ayers A two residential district. The project site is located at the end of High Street and off Groton, Groton Harvard Road. Two parcels have existing vacant single family homes and the other parcels are vacant undeveloped land. Waiver request, I think we addressed at the last meeting. And as Danny mentioned, the general conditions are the standard boilerplate for just about any project. So the next thing, there merits deep discussion.
Just one, one thing right here, we did add, so I did amend the date of the latest revision in here.
Yes, I noticed that.
It's October eighth, I don't know why I said June eleventh, that was definitely wrong, but it's October eighth.
That's under number sixteen on page, gosh, shoot, uh, page six.
Yep, page six, correct.
Thank you. Ken, you had a comment before we started talking about the special conditions?
Yeah, there, and there's some minor comments within this section that you, I mean, within the decision that, uh, town council put in.
Oh, where are they?
Uh, so, we, so number twelve. Instead of in, they put in each.
Number twelve.
Yeah, it's very, very minor comments, but town council did review all of these and, um.
Oh, each, okay, okay, instead of in.
They added on number twenty eight. It says, the member or agents of the planning board shall have the right to enter the site with the permission of the applicant to gather all information. That's, that's all.
You took, you actually took an extra step here to go to town council to take a look at these.
Yes, yes.
We've used them many times before.
Yes, um, I mean, the, so town council. Reviewed my original template of general conditions when I first joined. What I did hear was, let's have another set of eyes, um, review the decision. This was also sent to all of the department heads for review as well.
We got no comments back from the department heads, or anybody else? No, okay. So the plans that dated October eighth, twenty twenty five, the change that you made, those are the last. Plans from the engineer.
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Special conditions?
Um, stormwater, just so we.
Oh, you want to do stormwater?
Yeah, the stormwater, and then we'll go to special condition, because special conditions will be included in both.
Okay, because, and then we'll have to go back and vote on the open.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we'll vote on both, um, decisions after.
With individual votes?
Yep.
Okay, good, but then, well, so let's go over the major stormwater, then, okay, gotcha, I understand.
Special conditions, and then we'll make a formal vote out, yeah.
So major stormwater manager permit.
Mister Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I just make one comment on the open space? And this, I think this is, this is in the general, uh, in the boilerplate?
Yes.
The, the modification of plans. Just, just to point out, there's.
Pages on?
Uh, there's page nine. This is, this is just clarity for myself and hopefully the, uh, public. That even after a plan is approved, there, there can be, um, items found. That lead to either a minor modification or a major modification. My understanding, uh, is that a major modification would require the applicant to come back to the planning board. The determination of a, this is, this is, I'll make a statement, but it's a question. The determination of a major modification is done by the building commissioner, correct?
Yes, so with the, basically what happens is when that gets submitted to myself. I send that over to the building commissioner, we meet about it and discuss it on whether or not it's determined to be major or minor. Um, if it's minor, at that point, I, at that point, will, um, issue an administrative change letter. And, uh, I will update the board on that as well. A major modification, the applicant has to resubmit for a major modification, which then there is a legal notification. Uh, same process as we did with this.
Right, right. Thank you.
So major stormwater management permit. Uh, again, the waivers we addressed at the last meeting and the conditions, general conditions are the boilerplate standard and the special conditions are shared with the. Uh, previous, uh, document, and then we can go after, so let me, let me do the findings then. So the findings include, number one, construction site, site stormwater runoff and post-construction stormwater run, run, stormwater discharges. May permanently alter the hydraulic response of local watersheds and increase stormwater runoff rates and volumes. Which in turn may increase flooding, stream channel erosion, non-point source pollution, sediment transport deposition and decreased groundwater recharge. Number two. Yeah, I would think so.
I apologize. May not permit.
I was gonna say.
Okay, sounds kind of.
I was gonna say, that doesn't sound right. Let's correct that.
I risk finding.
I was saying, either the second finding is gonna say all of the above has been addressed, or there's a mistake in the wording.
Yep.
So let me reread, construction site stormwater runoff and post-construction stormwater discharges may not. Permanently alter the hydraulic response of local watersheds and increase stormwater runoff rates and volumes, which in turn may increase flooding, stream channel erosion. Non-point source pollution and sediment transport and deposition and decreased groundwater recharge. Well, that was a significant find. Number two.
What was the, what happened there?
I, I missed a word.
It was, okay, it was a blip.
Oh, no word. Yeah.
Yep, that's on me.
Okay, okay, number two, construction site stormwater runoff and post-construction stormwater discharges. Uh, we, uh, uh, now this is another one, it says can adversely affect, so what's, what's the story here?
Cannot.
Cannot. Construction site stormwater runoff and post-construction stormwater discharges cannot adversely affect public safety, public and private property, surface water, groundwater resources, drinking water supplies, recreation, aquatic habitats. Fish and other aquatic life, property values and other uses of land and water. Number three, it is in the public interest to regulate construction site stormwater runoff and post-construction stormwater discharges in order to minimize the impacts identified above. Number four, the applicant should also be, shall also be subject to the town of air water, town of air stormwater regulations. And finally, the site consists of parcel ID twenty seven through twenty eight, thirty, forty one, sixty five, seventy, one eighty nine, two thirteen. Containing more or less thirteen point six seven acres located within the Ayers A two residential district. The project site is located at the end of High Street and off Groton Harvard Road, two parcels of existing single family homes and the other parcels of vacant undeveloped land. Yes, sir.
Should we say, instead of may and can, not, should not?
Or will not?
Will not to those, I think what we're saying is to.
Shall not?
Like shall?
Shall not.
No.
No.
I mean, this wording is what I got straight from our regulations, so. How we wanna.
Oh.
Yeah, keep it.
But the regulation is one thing, this is our finding.
Our finding.
Yeah, so the finding is straight from the regulation, it's from our, from our, um, actual, uh, the wording within it.
Yeah, that we've gone through analysis into the best of our ability. We, these findings, I would say, you know, should not occur. You know what I'm trying, right, like, we aren't, we leaned on experts.
Should the word should be should?
But I think that the word cannot is acknowledging, uh, our, the legal status, status of things that you cannot build.
Yeah, the second one is cannot.
The first one.
The first one is, I, I would say, um, I mean, this wording is from our regulations, it says may. May not permanently alter, but if you want to say something differently.
I don't think we can go to court and say, we said we may not, you may not do it, it's, we, we don't know what all the may's are.
I mean, that, I'm just telling you, this is straight from our regulations.
I agree.
I mean, the AG, the AG approved the age, the, uh, the regulations, so.
Right?
It's their, it's their burden to, to follow that, and if there's an impact, they have to address it. That's basically what it's saying.
Okay. So. Even though it was in the regulations, you, you typed this out yourself, is what I'm getting at. You didn't cut and paste the regulation and drop it in there.
That's why I lost it on.
You had to put the regulation up there to just double check that it's exactly what we're doing?
I actually lost a whole decision on last week. When I was writing it, I came back and it was gone. Yeah, I was not happy. It might be in the bylaw. I think it's in the bylaw.
The overall assist. About the application.
I can go back through the, just, um, through the regulations.
I think it's in the regulation.
Yeah, I think it's in the regulation, um. We can, I can go back through that before, um, Jonathan signs it and make sure that it, it matches correctly. I just, I don't want to spend too much time. No, it's, there's several pages, there's several pages.
Is, is there a sunset on that language? Does it, as long as the, how long does that language persist?
Oh, it's with the decision, once it's recorded, it goes with the.
Once the, but once the property, once it's permitted, I mean, how long into the future?
Even, even post-construction. That's how all.
Yeah, 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 I'm just, you know, we're all taking a closer look.
So like, if, if, if there's an issue years down the road, that's why we also, uh, um, one of the, uh, conditions of the security. So that if anything does happen, it can be addressed. But the requirement would be under the, whoever at that time is the owner, whether it's the trustees, or if it's still the, or if it's the applicant at that point still. Um, it needs to be, it would need to be addressed. That's just under the state law for the MS four permit.
Can, can I say one thing? I don't know if this is appropriate.
Oh, yeah, with Janet, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that the way I read it was that those two statements say what can happen, and that number three is just a qualifier for it, saying. Since those two things are possibilities, it's in the public's in, interest to regulate this and to cr- require this permanent.
Yes. That's the way I read it.
Yeah, that's the way I read it.
So I thought it, it read correctly, like, all of those terrible things can happen, and that's why it's in the public interest to regulate this, and that's what you've done, but it's just.
Oh, and keep it as a pos, one and two would be positive statements.
Right, they would, yes, they would say that all those bad things can happen, which, you know, then, and that's why you've regulated and required all of these. Design. Criteria in order to min- minimize or prevent those.
Number four takes you the whole thing too, doesn't it? The applicant shall be subject to the.
Yes.
The whole.
That's how it's written in the, the other decisions you've done, that it's may.
Yeah.
Without the negative, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so it is written that way.
So it is right?
So it is right.
Okay.
We may have just.
Give me that again.
Okay, so the way we had it written in all the other decisions, it was correct.
Had the cannot.
Uh, no, without the, with the edit, without the edits.
Uh, these are risks.
These are correct, so, and town council did review this as well.
Okay.
So it, the first two statements are basically saying, these are possibilities.
Exactly.
That can happen.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's kind of the way I thought about it.
Yes.
It's a possibility.
Yes, I think that what would be helpful if the board.
Regulate it by what we did.
Yes.
And then we, it says you have to apply with all the stormwater regulations.
What would be helpful?
And their responsibility, yeah.
I think that would be helpful, and I, I don't want to do this if it contradicts the language in the regulations, but if you could do this, be just leading the both of those statements with given that. Given that construction site blah, 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 given that, and then three, blah, blah, and then all of a sudden, it all makes sense, right? You know what I'm saying?
Okay, alright.
Uh, with number three being therefore, it is.
Yeah, you could add the there.
Yeah, cause I, I had town council review this based on our regulations.
Yeah.
I know, this was.
So you didn't have a typo?
I guess I didn't have a typo, I, when, when you, well, when you initially read it, I thought I wrote something wrong.
Okay, I get it. Okay, so.
So I thought I was incorrect.
Alright, so the nods are coming up?
Yeah, I would say yes. Based on how we, cause that, this is how we've all, we've had it written in all the other decisions as well.
Yes, okay, see, that must be the way it seems regulations.
Yeah. And I will confirm that.
Okay. Makes sense now.
Um, and so the waiver requests, we already had addressed.
Already done.
The same, the same waiver request.
Same waivers.
Um, the general conditions on this one are not exactly the same as the other one, but. These general conditions are general conditions that we always have with every stormwater management permit.
And did you get any changes from the attorney?
Uh, yeah, so this one also had the same ones, which is.
The same, exactly, the date.
Each, the date of the decision.
Number sixteen, the date.
And, uh, number twenty six.
With the permission of the applicant.
Correct.
Okay, great. So that brings us to special conditions?
Yeah, that's the important one that we should pull up.
So the way this is gonna work is that. We, as the board, will go through all the special conditions and we'll take public input after we've gone through all thirty, we'll take input. But we're gonna march through this together. Okay, so first special condition, open space. Uh, just stop me when you guys have a point of contention you want to discuss. This development was result in the creation of two open space parcels. OS one comprised of approximately three point nine zero acres and OS two comprised of approximately two point eight eight acres. Number two, the proposed easement area of approximately fifty-five thousand three hundred twenty-five square feet shall be included as part of the conservation restriction. What's up?
Utility, you'd have to add the word utility easement.
The proposed utility easement area?
Yep. Otherwise, doesn't say which easement it is.
Okay.
Nathan, Julie?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I actually might, I might even say more than that.
Stormwater?
No, it's, it, it might be utility and stormwater, but is it both? It's basically utility easement.
Yeah.
Does, does it have to say anything, does it have to demonstrate the utility easement shown on such and such a plan or anything like that? Is it just a?
No, cause the plans are referenced in the decision.
So the fifty-five, three twenty-five ties right into that?
Yep.
Okay, but I need that word utility in there.
Yep.
Good? Number three, the existing driveway easement of approximately seven thousand twenty-two square feet serving the property is thirty Groton Harvard Road, map twenty-seven, parcel sixty-six. And twenty-eight Groton Harvard Road, map twenty-seven, parcel sixty-four shall not be included as part of the conservation restriction. Number four, holder of the conservation restriction will be Conservation Commission, and the holder of the land will be Condominium Association. Do we need the articles the there in each instance? Yes, and Nathan, you have comments as well.
Um, should we say air conservation commission?
Yeah. Danny?
Yep.
Julie, Ken, yeah, yeah, I think so. And what about the condominium association? Does this condominium say have a name yet?
They don't have a name just yet, that that'll be done later at a later date when I um. And so that's why I didn't put in a name.
Okay, the properties.
Highlighted in yellow.
Yes, I had them highlighted in yellow because um I still had didn't um was waiting on comments from um Conservation Commission. So but so the highlight does not need to be there.
Alright, number five.
Oh, I have a question.
Okay, yep.
Does something like this fall, need to be in the special conditions of the property? The fact that it's who's got the condominium, who's got the conservation restriction, stuff like that?
Yeah. Cause it's special to this project. So a special condition is typically something that is only specific to the project that you're dealing with.
Remember it being in other uh decisions like this, but other conservation restrictions.
And there are, there's reasons why it's there now.
Okay, thank you.
Fair enough. Alright, number five. The Conservation Commission will hold the conservation restriction if money is put aside in an escrow account each year to reimburse the commission for costs associated with monitoring. And if public access to the open space is granted within the CR with the possibility of trails on the property.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say. Alright. Let's have that, so Nathan, you wanna go first?
Yes. Uh, money is being put aside for two reasons. Reason A, there's costs associated with with monitoring. Uh, reason B is what?
So the the money is just for the costs associated with the monitoring.
So what, okay, so what is the and?
So then maybe this is just a sep- this is a what the um. The uh requirements that the Conservation Commission asked for for them to take the conservation restriction.
That's why the comma is there.
Nathan.
Restriction, I see, the conservation restriction is accepted on two conditions.
Correct.
If there's money and if there's public access. Okay. Would be nice if that was maybe.
You'd rather have it spelled out like number one.
Like an A and B.
A and B?
I can.
Yeah, something that's.
Yeah, okay. If.
So my first is and I'll I'll I'll, I'm not interrupting, but just go ahead clarify. I wanna clarify, the applicant is in agreement with this condition? Janet? Alright, and then Nathan, will you finish your comment?
I was done, thank you.
Ken, you want a comment?
Coming away, are you all done, Nathan?
With five.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, so I asked this question, I think I went to the Conservation Commission meeting, I might have asked the same question. Uh, what if we do not agree to these conditions, who takes it then?
Well, so it's not for the planning board to decide if you agree to the um access of the open spaces. It's not, it's for the applicant to decide whether or not they're, cause it's their property, they choose whether there's access or not. The only time you guys have the ability to choose if there's access is if they're asking for a density bonus.
Oh.
So the applicant is basically said they have no problem with the uh conservation restriction allowing the possibility of trails.
Would you like me to state why the commission has that request on there?
I get it, yeah.
I understand you get it, I just don't know if anybody else had the same question.
Please.
Okay, so um conservation restrictions are basically done in perpetuity. Um, it is more or less impossible to update and change a conservation restriction. So to put in the language in the conservation conservation restriction that public access is not granted. Just basically take that parcel of land and say for the eternity that the town of Air exists and that conservation restricts restriction is exists. No public access can come beyond there. That's saying now, that's saying thirty years from now, five years from now, a hundred years from now. We don't know what the landscape of the town will look like at this point, so to have that language not in there and not allow public access, in my opinion. And the Conservation Commission agreed with me, it'd be a disservice to the town with the possibility that we could at some point. It's way down the line in a crazy pipe dream we all have, I might have to connect this property all the way up to the high school.
Okay. Further questions on that one?
When we grind through the actual conservation restriction in the future, do we, does that come before our board?
It'll go to um Heather, I'll review it as well. Um, it'll then go to um, the applicant will write it, it'll then go to um. They'll co- uh do the.
Address those comments.
It'll then go to Conservation Commission for approval and then to the select board for approval, then back to EO EA for final approval and then it gets recorded.
Okay, so how much money? How much money do we put aside? It's not stated, it just says if money.
It's not stated, um I I did reach out to one of the agencies that we use now for monitoring, I did knock here back. Um, in the curly circle um conservation restriction, uh it lists in that one and I believe there's another one. So it's actually in conservation restrictions now that the town has passed, um two thou- up to two thousand dollars. Um, I think my, I think when we get to the actual language of the conservation restriction, we would hammer that that amount out. Because that could be later from now and I don't know what inflations will be doing at that point, but I would assume it'd be around that, if not a little bit more. And it would say strictly up to, so it wouldn't be a blanket amount, it would be whatever it costs the commission to do that monitoring.
Thanks.
Good. Good. Number six, just one lowercase m for motorized. Number six, no motorized vehicles shall be allowed on the open space unless used for maintenance of the proposed. Number seven, there shall be a split rail fence, boulders and or signage to demarcate the open space line along the back of the homes. Approved by the conservation agent and town planner. There shall also be signage stating, open space beyond this point, no mowing or dumping. Or similar wording approved by the conservation agent and town planner, this condition shall be included in the condominium documents.
So one comment um I received from the applicant was to remove the split rail fence section.
Yeah.
Um, uh they're most likely gonna lean towards the boulders and the signage. And the reason for not using the split rail fence is, uh you know, the up.
Maintenance.
Yeah.
Every few years you gotta replace them.
So did you change that?
Yep.
As you're going, I'm also going.
Number eight.
Nope, sorry.
It says, it says there'll be boulders and or signage, then it goes on to say there will be signage, there shall also be signage.
Yeah, so the signage is going to be required.
Right.
Um, boulders are in added if if they would put those and I think and the applicant did say that they were most likely gonna put boulders as well. And the good thing with this one is because it's a cons- uh condominium, um the as the next um condition shows like. They have to sh- the neighbors or the people that are living there aren't taking care of their yards. It's gonna be handled by a landscaper that the condominium association hires that will be required to maintain. Uh, the opens, uh have the open space plan in hand so that everyone knows where it is and that they wouldn't be allowed to dump or any of that stuff. And that's would be re- reviewed by me when I, the condominium documents come.
So I agree with all that stuff, cause we've done it before, this particular open space has an unusual shape to it and an unusual line to it. So somewhere right on that line, we're gonna have a row of boulders, is basically what we're talking about.
Along the areas most likely where there's not a retaining wall.
Or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Back of homes.
Hey, the copy of the open space plan and information regarding the open space shall be given to the home, home buyers prior to closing to ensure. They know the open space is protected, the applicant condominium association shall be responsible for making sure homeowners do not encroach. Or cause adverse impacts to the open space, this condition shall be included in the condominium documents.
And the reason that's this got it uh put in as well was because we have a. Um, there's a current project on Shaker Mill Bond, um that this uh exact thing occurred. None of the residents knew that it was a protected open space, they were mowing it and they were, they had put sheds on it. And stuff like that, so this is to make sure that that, none of that happens.
Okay, good.
All of this language involves the new homes that are being built and the open space between those homes and the open space on the the land. The open space also abuts adjoining property.
Yeah, we can't, we can't govern what other properties do, obviously during um, you know, when.
You guys must have talked about this in the past, if if a homeowner that's living next to the open space were to go over the open space line, that's not regulated.
No, it's regulated not by. So it's not regulated by the um condominium association, it's regulated by who holds the conservation restriction. So if Heather goes out there and sees that this property has a shed that's into the open space. She will send them a formal letter to get it removed and then there's a process for that. And that's written out in the conservation restriction. Same with, yeah, cutting trees and stuff like that. Cause we can't govern what other people do, we can only govern what's on, what's being done through this property and this.
Okay, so we can't put the same signage against those lots?
Oh, oh, yeah, no, we can, we can.
I'm not saying put boulders, I'm saying would would the open space be marked? That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, and all and all boundaries, it should be marked.
Oh, okay.
That's what, that's why I'm saying it refers only to, you know, the news part, but it doesn't refer to the entire perimeter that could be affected by anybody around.
That is correct, so would you guys?
There's actually a situation potentially that now where someone may actually be putting things across.
Yep.
Anyway, okay, so.
So I can add another condition that says um the uh open space signage. Shall be installed. Along.
You guys, I mean, do you have any thoughts on that, anybody else?
Property boundaries or conservation restriction boundaries.
Right.
Can I ask a question about that when when there's an opportunity?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, are you thinking like um one sign per property or, I mean?
Yeah, it wouldn't be a lot, we wouldn't want that.
There's seven thousand, I think there's seven thousand feet.
Yeah, no, it would be most likely uh one sign, one sign, you know, between one property line. If it's a really long one, then most likely it'd be two. Um, but that would be worked out with Heather and me when we're uh when we're actually dealing with the conservation restriction.
Okay, and I did hire, um, well, we have engaged uh Ross and Associates to um. Put pins in in all of those areas where there aren't any, so that it's like much clearer, so that'll um, I think that'll help.
Number nine, granite bounds shall be installed at every lot corner of budding open space parcels along with appropriate open space signage ref- reference. Reference in special condition numbers.
It's already in there.
So um one thing on this one, the applicant has requested not to have granite bounds, they've requested to do rebar with a cap on it. There is no requirement within our um our violas or regulations that it be granite bounds. You know, typically my preference is granite bounds, cause I know they won't move, but um. I've seen rebar with caps where they show exactly, it, you know, there are these big caps that show.
Yeah, I know what they look like.
And, you know, so it's kind uh, the the applicant did request to remove the granite bounds. And just use iron uh rebar with caps.
So typically the, this kind of language put into subdivisions where lots have corners. Not in a site plan.
No.
So it's kind of a different.
It's kind, exactly.
The fact that it said lot corners, it's, this is one lot.
Yeah, that's why it says it only has one lot.
Yeah, right.
But we, I think, you know. Rebar with the with the cap works as well.
Alright.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Number ten, the conservation restriction shall be completed and recorded prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. Number eleven, prior to site work commencing, the applicant shall stake the limit of work in the proposed utility easement. The applicant will notify, excuse me, the town planner and conservation agent when this has been completed. And have a site visit to review which trees wooded areas can be saved during construction. Number twelve, any trees are determined to be kept, the applicant shall put ribbon and or put orange construction fencing around them. Number thirteen.
So number thirteen was removed because in speaking. With the, with the applicant, the reasoning behind it was they're gonna use waddles and silt fence along all of the limit of work. So that they, there's not gonna be areas that won't have it.
And that was what we requested be put on the plan when the last change was made.
Yes, yeah, so we don't, we're, they're not gonna have orange construction fencing, they're gonna have it all along the um. Stormwa- the the edge of the limit of work as well as the um easement.
Okay.
So it'll be very.
You you'll be able to see exactly where it is.
So going forward, the numbers I'm referencing are the new numbers, the corrected numbers, okay?
Oh, boy.
Well, I have it online, it's not in yours. Yeah, you do too.
That's fine, don't worry, I I.
Number thirteen, three dwelling units are to be restricted to allow for occupancy by individuals meeting the requirements for affordable housing. The applicant shall work with community development to develop the appropriate restriction which shall be recorded. Number fourteen, the first affordable unit shall be created with or before the fifth, uh the seventh, I'm sorry, single family home. And the second affordable units shall be, second affordable unit shall be created with or before the first duplex. And the third shall be created with or before the twentieth single or second duplex.
Yeah, and so this is, this is um with discussions with Alicia, who handles the affordable housing information. Um, she suggested the seventh um single family, the first duplex and then either this. The twentieth single or the second duplex, because the the decision hadn't been uh made on whether it's a single or duplex, that's the third unit.
Okay, fair enough. Number fifteen, the three affordable units shall qualify the Massachusetts LIP LAU designation through the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities. An application for three LA units shall be submitted to EA, EO HLC, the Economic Office of Housing and. In livable communities prior to building permits being granted.
Okay, so can you just give the that lip, I think I know, but does LAU?
Um, limited action unit.
Limited action unit.
Number sixteen.
A new term, it's.
No, it's something that.
It's always been lip slash.
Yeah, lip slash LAU, it's it's something that's been around for quite a while, but typically what we hear, we never re- reference them as lip or LAU. We usually just say SHI units, that's just an overall, you know, term.
The three affordable units, this is number sixteen, shall be and remain affordable in perpetuity and shall be marketed to eligible households. Whose annual income may not exceed eighty percent of area median in- income adjusted for household size. As determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, the affordable units. And subject to approval by EO HLC, the affordable unit shall be eligible to be included in the town subsidized housing inventory. As maintained by EO HLC. Good, okay, blasting seventeen and then there's sub sections, A, B, C, D, E, and F. The applicant shall submit for a blasting permit through the fire department and as part of that permit, the following will apply. A, the applicant shall submit the pre-blast surveys to the fire department prior to the commencement commencement of blasting. B, the applicant shall hold a meeting with the abutters to discuss blasting prior to the commencement of blasting. C, prior to the commencement of site work, the applicant shall review the blasting plan with the fire department. And provide insurance certifications for both the applicant and the blasting firm. D, the applicant shall have the proper signage and notifications that all the neighbors are properly informed when blasting will occur. E, the applicant shall adhere to the approved blasting hours, eight AM to three PM from Monday through Friday. No blasting is allowed on weekends, lowercase B. F, the applicant shall submit blasting reports at the end of the week to the fire department. F, the applicant shall submit blasting reports at the end of the week to the fire department. Colleagues, we all go here.
Sometimes you use the word abutters, sometimes you've used the word neighbors.
Oh, let me, let me be consistent.
What do we wanna do?
Abutters. Well, there's a, wh- where did you see? So neighbors, that one's different, yeah, that is different, because the abutters are the ones who are going to get the pre-blast survey. The neighbors are anyone within the vicinity that's that could hear or could. That would be in the vicinity that driving by, so they know that blasting could occur.
I wasn't in a butter to Stratton Hill, but I technically got the blasting notice.
Yeah, I get it. Alright, so it works the way it is, what you're saying, okay.
Um for E, where it says no blasting is allowed on the weekends, that we had also. Somewhere in there, we had also said they're not working on holidays.
Oh, no weekends. Yeah, it's it's in the regular hours, but it's good to just. Yeah, it's good.
Is there no blasting on holidays?
Yep.
Just a quick question on this um. Did we put in the um documents or section, the material section?
Yep.
The um, you did, okay, got it, just checking. Item five, safety plan for blasting led submitted seven sixteen twenty twenty five, I just wanted to make sure that.
I've referenced every material that was submitted.
Okay, well.
Yeah, no, no, good question, I just, I just.
Alright, traffic mitigation eighteen. The applicant shall be responsible for implementing the traffic mitigation recommendations stated in the transportation impact assessment dated November twentieth twenty twenty four. Created by Vanessa and Associates Incorporated. Nineteen, the applicant shall submit a construction traffic management plan for approval from the DPW and police chief prior to starting work. This shall include temporary truck traffic route signage. Twenty, the applicant shall require all construction traffic to enter the site via Washington Street to Highland Avenue to Winthrop Avenue. And then into the site, site work done at third at the thirty eight Groton Harvard Road site shall use Groton Harvard Road for access. Twenty one, construction vehicles shall not be allowed to use engine brakes on the designated construction vehicle traffic routes stated above. Twenty two, the applicant shall work with the DPW to take photographs and document the existing conditions of the roads. Roads used for truck traffic reference in special condition number twenty. Twenty three, the applicant shall reconstruct the portion of High Street between Winthrop Avenue and the entrance to Lincoln Hills Development. Work shall meet all air department of public work standards and include A, full depth reconstruction of the roadway. B, construction of a five foot wide by two minutes sidewalk in Cape Cod berm on the southern side of the roadway. C, painted crosswalk, stop bar and stop sign for the High Street westbound approach to the Winthrop Avenue intersection. D, stop sign and painted stop bar for the Winthrop Avenue southbound approach of the High Street intersection. Number twenty four, the applicant shall paint a crosswalk and provide cross- crosswalk signage of the existing painted mid block crosswalk on High Street. Twenty five. Uh the applicant shall reconstruct the existing sidewalk along the frontage of fifteen Winthrop Avenue, Neshova Park Assisted Living. The replacement sidewalk and curving shall meet all Department of Public Works standards, concrete. A concrete ADA compliant handicap ramp will be constructed at the High Street intersection. Number twenty six, and then there's a comment here. So uh after I read it, if you will, comment on, the applicant should provide a monetary contribution for construction of a new sidewalk on Home Street. And a portion of William Street as described in the memo from the Department of Public Works dated July third uh twenty twenty five. What's the comment?
Yes, so on this one, town council uh asked that we memorialize an amount um if it's been decided. And for this one, it was uh ten thousand.
So would you would just put a provide a monetary contribution of ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Miscellaneous. The applicant shall submit a construction schedule and a preliminary inspection schedule to the planning department and DPW for review and approval prior to construction. Twenty eight, the applicant shall submit DPW related permits and provide DPW inspection as described in the Department of Public Works memo dated September third twenty twenty five. The uh twenty nine, the applicant shall provide internal water booster pumps for certain units as required by the Department of Public Works. Imagine that's internally worked out, okay, number, go ahead.
I was gonna change it to if required, but as required, it's the same, it's the same thing, I guess.
Number thirty, the applicant shall submit uh schedule of costs for the construction of ways and required improvements therein. Infrastructure to provide services and utilities to the profo- proposed development, stormwater management facilities and similar elements. Here and after referred to collectively as the improvements, be assured by means of providing appropriate security. Thirty one, this schedule of cost shall be reviewed by the DPW to ensure that the bond financial surety shall sufficiently cover the cost. Of the improvements associated with the proposed development, and there are comments for thirty one, I'll turn it to Danny after I read it. The applicant shall enter triparte uh uh a tripartite agreement with the bank and the town of Air. This agreement shall be reviewed and approved by the town of Air's council, okay.
So um this.
Definitely shall enter a.
Oh, yeah.
The, so on this one, town council had stated it questions if the board has the authority since this is not a subdivision. This was uh a discussion we had with the applicant and they agreed to do this. So yes, it's not a subdivision, but the applicant did agree to do this.
Thirty three, any bond or financial security acting as a performance guarantee for required improvements that is held by the town. Due to the applicant's failure to fully and properly complete said improvements, may be applied by the board for the benefit of the town. As provided in Massa- Massachusetts General Law uh chapter forty one subsection eighty one Y. The town may apply such funds to offset the cost of completing the incomplete work. If such proceeds do not exceed one hundred thousand dollars or whatever sum is applicable by statute at the time. The expenditure may be made without specific appropriation under Mass General Law, chapter forty four subsection fifty three. Provided that such expenditure is approved by the select board.
Your chair.
Yes, sir.
What board, the board?
The planning board. So it's this I took straight out of our bylaw, that's um so uh I can add planning board if you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Number thirty four, the applicant shall ensure that snow storage locations shown in the approved site plan are followed. And that snow is not piled along the back of the visitor parking as shown on the site plan. Proper signage showing no so- snow storage along this visitor parking area shall be installed. Number thirty five, the applicant shall be required to give the site plan showing the allowed snow storage locations to the company that handles snow plowing. This condition shall be required to be included in condominium documents. Thirty six, prior to the condominium documents being recorded, these documents shall be submitted to the town planner for review. Yes, sir.
Do we need to add the word for an approval or just review?
No, just review, I I I don't, I don't. No, it's just to make sure that whatever conditions we talk about within here are referenced in there.
Number thirty seven, uh eco-friendly fertilizers shall be allowed and no herbicide shall be allowed for maintenance post-construction. This condition shall be included in the condominium documents. Stormwater, number thirty eight, the certificate of completion shall be recorded, the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds by the owner. And a copy of the recorded decision be submitted electronically to the planning department. Number thirty nine, yep.
So the certificate of completion we're talking about here is in reference to the stormwater regulations?
Yep.
Rather than anything else, rather than the houses or the roads or.
Correct.
Does this, does it need to say certificate of completion in accordance with our stormwater regulations or something like that? I'm confused, it could be more than one type of certificate.
Yeah, so the reason, it, that's why it's under stormwater, because we usually add this as a condition under our stormwater, under our special conditions. But if you want to specify um certificate completion as required. By um.
I just, does it, should it just, I guess maybe just could, but does it make any difference maybe to say stormwater regulations or just stormwater? If it says regular, I don't know.
Well, that's the problem, it's some of this.
It's just stormwater.
Yeah, it's just stormwater in general.
So I guess I would add, if you, if you guys think it makes sense, I would add something that says. As required by the stormwater regulations, so there's no question as to what certificate of completion it is.
Okay. Okay. Number thirty nine. Yep.
A stormwater maintenance fee or bond shall be required to ensure the operation and maintenance of the stormwater system. The fee or bond would be based on the cost estimate providing the value of five years of the operation and maintenance of the stormwater system.
And just so on this one, it's not held for five years, it's the cost of five years. That gets put away in case something needs to be done.
And number forty, the applicant shall be responsible for reconstructing the existing catch basin and culvert in front of thirty eight Groton Harvard Road. The DPW is responsible for designing plans for this reconstruction of the cast base, catch basin and culvert.
We just could go back as I can to thirty nine, Danny, so they're gonna put five years worth of money in there, could be two thousand a year, could be ten thousand. Ten thousand just stays in the fund and moves ahead. If it ever gets used until year seven, then it gets used then.
Exactly.
So first uh uh open to board colleagues, any comment discussion?
I just wanted to, if I could go back to um the bond on on the work and and the town council's comment, so. I guess we know.
Number thirty two?
Yeah, thirty two and thirty three, so. This is an exception because the applicant has agreed to it. Typically, we can require it, as you mentioned, in a subdivision. This not being a subdivision, site plan doesn't require it typically in our language. So do we have any apprehension about his comment, I just, it's covered now that.
No, so if the applicant was opposed to doing this, I mean, the applicant's the one who approached me about this. Um saying that they would, they would um would be, would be be interested in doing this. If the applicant was saying no and we were to enforce that, that was definitely, that'd be grounds for an appeal that would definitely be overturned.
Okay. Just double checking it. And the rest of the language in in thirty three is the typical language that would be.
Straight out of our performance guarantee.
Right, of the subdivision section, basically, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any further comment or discussion from my colleagues? I'd like to open this up for public comment and the public comment will be restricted to the special conditions that we're discussing here, sir.
What about the two previous documents?
Yeah, and the other, and the open space residential uh site plan approval, inclusion of housing and the stormwater.
Jayden, is there thirty Groton Harvard Road?
Welcome, Jayden.
Jacob, Jake, it all works. Um so uh both, in both of the previously documents. It has like the oversight, which is members of the agents of the planning board with the right to enter the site. It used to say anytime, it's now changed with the permission of the applicant. It's worrying to me that uh oversight would require permission.
That came from town council, um it said he's.
But all of your previous documents with this board language has said anytime and now we're changing it specifically for this process project.
No, I'm gonna be going forward, I'm I'm gonna make that amendment.
Are you gonna amend pass?
But typically, we do request um, we don't just walk on their site, we typically always ask them for permission.
Yeah, but you're in oversight, it feels weird to say, or do we have permission to do oversight as the oversight committee?
Well, it's 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 a fourth amendment thing, it's it's. We're, not that we are asking for permission for oversight, we're asking for permission on when we can come to see.
Yeah, that's just, that doesn't feel like oversight anymore, that feels to me like complete compliance with the developers. I mean, if it was the law, then all your past documents were wrong, so like.
And I, and I agree, and they are.
Difference in it doesn't feel like you have oversight anymore, um with that at all. Um and the other document I had.
Wait a minute, can I comment on this for just a second? Jacob, are you anticipating that we would not get permission to go on the site?
I mean, maybe it'll be delayed because we give you a call because something's wrong and then they have time to clean it up while they wait on the permission call instead of you being able to show up. The 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 weight of the asking for permission reduces the chance of proper oversight. I think it's pretty clear.
I think the other thing, maybe you you're misunderstanding is that this is a planning board request, any permit that they pull needs to be inspected. So if they pull a, when they put in the sewer line, it has to be inspected, the water line inspected, undergoing utilities, so there's so many.
They move the borders, we call.
This is not for.
You.
No, 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 this is not for me, this is for them.
But it says them and 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 agents, you would be an agent of the planning.
So typically, it's, I walk on the site all the time, I do it in every project, I've never been turned away. It's typically for the planning board, because one, we need to, if the if the whole board's going to be there, we need to set up a site visit. We need to post a public agenda because all, we have a quorum there. So there's multiple steps, it's, this is more for when the board as a whole wants to go to a site. I usually have every right to go on the site, most, I've never had anyone turn anyway.
Yeah, the language is really confusing then.
Typically, I understand why you're saying it sounds shady, but actually, it's also just for our protection. It's so that they can say the site is safe and clear for us to be walking around, like we can't just show up. As a giant group of people and walk on a site that might not be ready for us, right, I mean, it's a safety concern.
Yeah.
We could uh. Okay, so you've got that in writing, this P right, the the uh town council changed that, they changed that language.
Yep. Okay, I had one more, but I lost on my phone, so I might come back later, but I'll leave it for other people.
Is there anyone else in the room that'd like as a question or comment? Does anyone have a hand up, Hudson?
Um I believe there's, oh, yeah, there's people coming.
Hi.
Hi.
Julianne Govang, thirty four Groton Harvard Road, I've missed you all so much.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Um, quick question, I believe it's going back to section three findings, I apologize, I thought I printed everything, but I don't have that. It's about the stormwater and the existing language that you just debated. Can also be interpreted to say, even, you know, even with the addition of, given that. Something could happen, the way it reads is. That, given that something could happen, the applicant is not responsible for any damage done. That's how I'm, that's how I'm reading it.
Yeah, so I understand that and um why it can come off that way, so that's why number four, the applicant is also subject to the town of air. Stormwater regulations, that's what ties it all together is they have to comply with this and within that, with the stormwater regulations. It talks about what they can and cannot do, what what is an um a violation, what is not a violation. So it's kind of one of those over like a putting a bow on it.
Awesome, without going to town council, can additional language be incorporated saying? That that ties into the stormwater regulations?
Number four does, the applicant shall also be subject to the town of air stormwater regulations.
Okay, but in that first paragraph, again, it's a kind of, the way, again, legalese, it's a loophole.
It's not a loophole.
It's a loophole because it says can.
So.
I mean, I'm sure they wouldn't do anything with intent, that's not what I'm implying, but if this is what the language has been straight along. This might be one of those languages that the town needs to address because it's not clear. You know what I'm saying?
Understandable, um. So could you do a therefore, start start forward, tie it back to the.
First two paragraphs, one and two are simply statements. It's all our statements that say, you know, an effort, then the third one says. It is in the public interest to regulate the construction, site stormwater, post-construction, which we did. So it's really in the public interest, the regulation is in the third one, and then the fourth one is saying it has to comply with the air stormwater regulations, so. It's kind of a, you know.
It's like a.
Two statements and then follow along type thing.
You could take out the also, just say the applicant shall be subject to the town of air stormwater regulations.
It's the same thing, I think.
Does, but.
Even if you add in lieu of numbers one and two.
In light of.
In light of, thank you. That way it ties the whole concept together. Thank you, another quick question, on special conditions, number, I think it's number eight. And that is saying that um people should not infringe or encroach. Or cause adverse impacts to the open space, is there anything in the language anywhere that says if they do, there will be penalties?
Yes, in the conservation restriction.
Perfect, thank you, and. Question, hypothetical question, in the case of neighboring properties, if there's a tree over on one side of a property. And it's leaning over onto another property, you can, you tell that other property, please remove the tree or deal with the tree so it doesn't fall, right? In the case of an open space, it's owned by the applicant. In the case of an open space, it's owned by the applicant, but it's handled and overseen by the conservation. So if there's an overhanging tree threatening a property, who would the public notify?
So in regards to the conservation restriction, all that means is to, the conservation commission. We just oversee that that open space is protected, any sort of maintenance that needs to be done on that. Is handled by the landowner.
So I would say also contact the town as well.
Oh, yes, obviously.
I would always contact both.
Cause they're gonna have to notify us that whatever gets done in that conservation restriction, because that'd be a change to the existing. So, but yeah, it, it, that would be handled by the, by the landowner, by the, the property owner of the open space. Um, it, it gets a little confusing, so the conservation commission isn't the landowner. We only own the document that oversees the land.
Okay.
And the condo association, once all those documents are handled, it usually takes two to three years for the switch over. Will then be, the condo association is the landowner, and we just oversee the land.
Okay, so, thank you.
Julianne. Was your, one of your questions was about enforcement, was that one of your questions about the enforcement? Was it enforcement on the stormwater or the site plan or?
Open space.
Open space, yeah.
Okay, well.
And that was just encroachment, if somebody like starts dumping stuff they shouldn't or whatever.
Yeah, so within the conservation restriction, there is a section.
And we do have language in the, um, general conditions of the, uh, both approvals as well about. Number six.
Correct.
So unauthorized deviations from the approved site plan and stormwater management firm result in the planning board seeking to issue a cease and desist order. Until the deviation is addressed, violation of any condition contained herein or failure to comply with site plan or stormwater management permit. Shall be subject to section two one four enforcement of the town of air stormwater regulations.
The only problem with that one is that's only regarding the applicant. Uh, so if, I think if, if, if it's another property that is encroaching within the open space. That is where the conservation restriction then kicks in, cause then.
Yeah, well, I, I thought they might be concerned with, in general, some kind of enforcement, I mentioned that.
And also one more point to that, the conservation restriction in the open space do not get to, done until the project is more or less completed. So.
Yeah.
So until, and that'll be a while, I said, link, uh, Shaker Pond, that just, we just signed that one off. And did the, uh, I think this last, it's past spring, so.
The only thing with that one, it, just before.
Yeah, but I'm just, but ju- with, with this one, so just, so just going forward, so. It's all approved open space, but that conservation restriction isn't in place for some time.
Yes, and the enforcement on that is when the deadline is, is the final certificate of occupancy. So the last home before they can get final move in for that last home, the CR needs to be in place.
So anything prior to that, any sort of violation would then come to the town.
Yeah, and that way it just ensures that we get the conservation restriction done on time. Where we've had prob, problems with other projects that the CRs come years and years after the project.
The baseline comes after the CR years later. So just so everyone understands the process, it, it's a lo, lengthy process, we talking about all this now. But the CR won't be in place right away, the open space won't be deeded right away, it, it takes some time. So all that'll be done later, but so until that time, the, obviously the town needs to be notified of any sort of violation that may occur.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, Anthony Plan, thirty five Grotton Harvard Road. Um, I know we discussed this last time and all that stuff, um, and I know that, like, the drainage report, there's a lot of. Um, verbiage about that, um, that little channel that goes on the side of our road. Um, which they say, nev-, um, you know, additional runoff from the street. Um, which is not included in all those calculations. So, and, um, so I'm just, um, my concern is, cause we've already have like water issues. And here in the next few months, our, uh, sub pumps that we have in our basement are on constantly, you know, during the late spring, early. Uh, you know, uh, early spring and all that stuff, so my biggest concern, and my wife did receive an email a few weeks ago. Saying that they were gonna be looking into, but we haven't heard anything back since, so.
Um, yeah, so, um, Matt did reach out, there was an email that was sent, I believe, last week or maybe a week and a half ago. I, I saw the email because he CC'd me on it, that did say, that spelled out the exact steps on how that was going to work.
Right, and they were looking for, uh, peop-, but, I mean. I, I just saw it, uh, cause it, my name wasn't on there, my wife got it, so I know she forwarded to me, I think it was last week or so. And then, or, and I'm not sure when it happened or, or how long this is gonna, but my biggest concern is if we start doing anything up there. And, and right now, like, here in the next few months, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna see that increase of water like we always do. Uh, two years ago, like I said, our backyard was Flanagan Pond, and my biggest concern is if we don't address this. Prior to anything than my house, and, you know, we have a generator now just because of, of that, and that's on a low s- so. I- it's out of the water zone, but if we add more water to that, i- it could, you know, be catastrophic and all that stuff. And my, and my biggest concern is, you know, if we're underwater and all that stuff, where are we gonna go, I mean.
So I, um, I know Matt did say that they did hire a survey crew. That they're gonna be going out there to survey the easement and get that information, so I know they're moving this along as quickly as they can. Um, but.
Any idea of how long or?
I don't have a timeframe on that, but I know it's, he's getting the survey crew out there to get that done. I'm sorry, what? Um, oh, yeah, the survey crew is, is gonna be, has been already hired to go out there and get that done, so.
Okay.
The plan should be coming shortly af- after that, and then it's the process of going through conservation commission.
Right.
Recommend that he'd be talking directly to the DPW.
Yes, yeah, I mean, there, there was an email that was sent, I, maybe you.
I was not, I was not on that email. My wife was, but she barely, uh, and then finally she got around to sending it to me, so I only saw it like last week.
I'll make sure that you get CC'd on that.
Because, um, yeah, i- it's, uh, it's a big concern, and if they start doing that, and especially with spring right around the corner now, you know, time flies. Um, and that's when my.
That's when you're, it's, cause that's when the highest ground fire is.
And, and that's when the sub pumps are on twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
And i- it's, it's really concerning, cause we've, we did have issues in the past, and that's my biggest thing. If we have a clear path to the, then that may, you know, that will decrease the chance of us, uh, being part of Flanagan.
I'll make sure that, so what I'll do is tomorrow, I'll, um, have Matt give you an, um, CC you, or send you an update. And CC your wife on it, just so that you know exactly where we are.
And, perfect, thank you.
Um, let's recognize Catherine.
Uh, wait, this.
She's already gone, so let's.
No, Rachel did not go.
Yeah, Rachel's been up here, you haven't been up here?
That was a previous project.
All right, come on.
Hello, uh, Rachel Cosera, thirty Grotton Harvard Road, um, I just wanted to point out on page one of both of the documents. Uh, the last name of James is missing, um, I'm assuming it's Hedlin, but I just figured I'd point it out just for the record.
Um, yes, thank you.
Uh, I just didn't know, um, because I, I don't understand, um, to circle back to. What Mr. Diskin was mentioning, uh, with regard to the language, um, I believe, uh, excuse me. The language regarding the stormwater, uh, management findings, um, if. The applicant is required to follow the stormwater bylaw. And in the bylaw, it states that no water, like, the water has to stay where the water stays. So I don't understand why.
Existing conditions.
Pardon me?
No, so I think where, where, I think your question is.
So I'm just, I'm, I'm, it, it just, uh, to get back to Julie's point, it just seems like it is a, a big loophole, and. Mr. Diskin did point it out, um, that the language is, uh, you know, it doesn't seem like it's. App- appropriate for.
Didn't say that.
Well, I mean, you, I think you indicate it's inappropriate by modifying the language that's there, I, I.
So, let me, yeah, so, um, the language as it states, basically what happens is, so. The stormwater regulations make it so everything that they submit to us and prove, you know, based on the numbers and everything. That the design won't do that. But, as everyone knows, the, you know, science is not a hundred percent. So if there is an occasion that it does happen, that's, there is an overflow, that this, some, something happens. It, 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 it's not, um, they are still responsible for addressing that, it's just saying that if it happens. That they still have to meet the stormwater regu- regulations. That's where, I mean, and, and Julianne, that's why we did add that additional language, um, as Julianne, um, had request, uh, had asked about. In light of the above, the applicant shall be subject to the stormwater, um, regulations.
Um, okay. Um, I just saw you, there's a crossed out T in the, the, I don't know, sorry, I just see that.
Yeah, cause it was a capital.
Oh, okay, Roger that, um, and, um, I just wanted to, uh. Talk about the special conditions with regard to the conservation. Um, land.
Yep.
Um, a gentleman, and I do apologize, I forgot his name, um, at a previous, uh, conservation commission meeting. Mentioned that, um, the funds for the upkeep of the property, I'm not sure if there is a specific amount. That was mentioned with regard to that, but I didn't know if it was possible to put wording in. Um, to indicate that the funds would be, uh, I don't know how, congruent with. Um. The appropriate amount of money necessary in order to maintain the conservation land. Um, so, I, I don't know if it's possible to put that in there, because I know there's set amounts of money that typically are put in different. Uh, uh, parts of the special conditions, but I didn't know if you had honed in on a number, if it's just an open end, or how. Uh, that determination is figured out.
Are you talking about the money is put aside in an escrow account each year to reimburse the commission to costs associated with monitoring? Is that your section you're talking about? Yes, so, um, as.
As they've stated earlier, um, that would be written into the conservation restriction.
So that will be visited by them at a different point in time, and then they'll visit it, okay, got you, I just wanted to.
Cause we don't have like an estimate of what the co, what it would be to co, um, do the monitoring on that size, uh, of the parcel.
Okay, I just thought I'd mention it just in case, um, and then, uh, I just had, uh, goodness, I just had a question. When it comes to just the, the times that this is open and all of that, the details will be ironed out at a later date, that's not. You wouldn't put that specific thing in the special conditions for the conservation land?
You mean the times as to the, what the, when the open space would be open, like, uh, timing as in like hours?
I, I guess so, or like appropriate time?
Yeah, I believe we typically do dusk to dawn is what most conservation restrictions are. Or dawn to dusk, that, sorry, yep, dawn to dusk, headed backwards. Yes.
Thank you, I just was curious, sorry, thanks.
Now can I, uh, yes.
Yes, um, I believe it's Catherine.
Hi, thank you. I am trying to follow some of this, it's a little bit scattered, but because the point of, um, that stormwater. Responsibility has been brought up a few times, um, would it just be, instead of saying in, on that. Paragraph four or five in lieu of, can the plain language that you just stated, like, if one through three happens? Like, if that happens, then the applicant is responsible for the adverse effect and as further required by the stormwater. Um. Uh, shall also be subject to the town of air stormwater regulations, just kind of like state the plain language that you're saying here.
I think it would be stronger just to say, in general, no matter what happens, good or bad. They are subject to the town of air stormwater regulations regardless of what happens.
So I think it's saying in addition, I guess I'm just trying to address what a number of people are concerned about, is that they're reading this language differently than what. It is, like, I understand that it, I, I personally read it the way you do. But I think that a number of people are concerned that it does leave a loophole, so by just reading the plain language.
That is plain language.
So I understand where you're coming from, but the people who are going to be enforcing it and the applicant know. That they are responsible for it, so I will be the one who enforces it, I'm not gonna be reading it any other way. Um, so it's not going to be a, a gray area.
Okay, yep, that's fine, um, there was another point where it was talking about, uh, responsibility for roads. I think so, maybe even in the miscellaneous, um, if we could just include sidewalks and driveways if they're. Affected also.
Uh, yes, let's see, um, are you talking about?
Um.
Which condition are you talking about, cause there's several conditions about.
It was one of the first one that was, one of the first ones that was mentioned about the roads, and it was a very basic one, it just said.
If the applicant shall submit a construct, uh, the applicant shall work with the DPW to take. For, uh, photographs and document the existing conditions of the roads used by the traffic, uh, truck traffic reference.
I just wanna make sure that sidewalks and driveways are, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, I just have experience with. Situation where sidewalks and driveways were affected by, uh, construction traffic and not fixed because it was not specifically set out.
Okay, um, so. Existing roads, um.
I mean, it, it. Which number is? Twenty-two just says they're gonna take.
Yeah, but she's, she's talking about like.
You could wreck a sidewalk, you could wreck a driveway, something like that.
Yeah.
Exactly, so we need to do the photographs, document that, and then if there's a, um, corresponding condition. That addresses actually.
I got, uh, it's like this, so, the applicant shall work with the DPW to take photographs and document the existing conditions of the road, sidewalks and driveway connections.
So which trucks aren't gonna use sidewalks, they're not gonna use tr- sidewalks, they're not gonna use driveways.
Of the route, of the route, is what I say, so.
Truck road, or whatever, yeah.
Used for truck traffic reference in special condition twenty-one.
And then was there, um, a condition that account, that, a corresponding condition about what would happen if there was damage to the roads? Sidewalk, roads, because that would then also just need to be amended to include sidewalks and driveway connections.
Um, no, so, that is a good point, um, so, any. Um, how do we wanna word this, so it's, it's like, there's any impacts to any of the existing roadway sidewalks or driveways?
As determined by whom?
As determined by the DPW.
Conclude that, it's important. It's determined by the TPW.
Any impact, it's, yeah, I, I wanna make sure we get the wording right on this one.
Adverse impact.
Would be the same, it's all in twenty-two, right, the whole thing's in twenty-two, just makes sense.
Um.
You wanna, you wanna take, document the existing conditions. Damage as determined by the DPW.
Any, any damage.
By truck traffic or construction traffic, I would say. I think, I'd say any traffic.
In the referenced, construction traffic.
I think we pretty much, we're gonna get that, but, but it, put it in there.
In the reference. Truck. Twenty-one.
Shall be what?
Shall be, um, fixed.
Shall be, shall.
Be addressed.
Placed or repaired.
Shall be repaired.
They can make their own standard up.
Yes, so it would read any damage determined by the DPW caused by construction traffic in the reference truck route. Special condition twenty-one. Shall be repaired by the applicant in accordance with GPW standards.
Twenty-two, right? Special condition twenty-two, twenty, no, shit, nevermind, do what you said.
Yeah, it's twenty-one in mind.
Twenty-one is identifying the truck route, is is the trap, twenty-two is. Or twenty.
Yeah, twenty-three is the the discussion of what is being documented, twenty-four, uh, twenty-one is the actual truck route.
Alright, as long as you got the numbers correct.
Yep.
So that's what, we have forty-one special conditions now, is that the right number?
Uh, I have forty-two.
Forty-two, okay, good.
Um, and then my last question is with the um, the blasting section.
Yes.
How will notice be provided to a butters and can the meeting be um? Uh, I'm trying to look to see which number.
So it's number eighteen. Under blasting.
Yeah, so where's it with, oh, the butters, yeah, so I just, I'm I'm not, I'm obviously always on Zoom. So I'm wondering how it'll be noticed and whether there can be a requirement that there's remote access to the uh. However, this discussion is going to be held.
So the problem with that is, I I, we can't like require remote access, um. That's above and past uh, beyond the planning board's ability, um. We can, we can require them to hold the meeting because they've already a- agreed to do that. Um, but whether or not it's in person or on Zoom, I I, we cannot be the ones to make that as a condition.
Okay.
Um, but in terms of the notification, there is a a a legal notice that, a a, a letter that gets sent out via mail. To all of the butters.
Do you know what address that goes to? I'm just still in the situation where I've, I think I've updated my address with all departments. But I'm still not getting anything, so I'm just wondering where that comes.
So it would be sent to whatever is on the assessor's um, information. So, uh, you haven't received anything cuz we haven't sent anything, at least from us.
Okay.
We don't, we don't send out notifications for meetings, only for the public, when the public hearing is being opened.
Right, right, you had mentioned that last time on that particular, yeah.
Yeah, so what we do is we just put it on the website or on the um, town board.
Can you recommend that you just send it to you and you have it available when you need it for the correct address?
Yeah, I believe she stated that she did correct it with the assessor's office.
I I did, I don't need, you don't need to be further involved beyond, you sound very dizzy, so. I can, I'll continue to to talk and 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 confirm um, the address and and whatnot, so. That's fine, let me just quick take a look at my note if that was, yep, those were my points, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Zoom?
Michael Govang, thirty-four Grotton Harvard Road.
Not too close, uh, no, no, no. There's a, there's a fine line between Barry's hearing and our ability to broadcast, so thank you.
Quick question, um, sidewalks, is there a continuous sidewalk all the way to downtown from here? From the development, I know we talked, they talked about it. So there is a, so there's a hot sidewalk that goes along um, the southern side of High Street. Then crosses over and goes to the north side of High Street and then that's where, um, so then it comes down. Um, let me pull up the plan, let me pull up the 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 uh, GIS. There is a section that's missing, which is the home street section, which would be added in, that was one of the conditions, ten thousand dollars for that. Um, and then down here, down, that's coming down, I believe it's Columbia. Um, doesn't have it, but that's part of, yeah, Columbia Street doesn't have it, but that's part of the towns, um. We have a plan already in place to put a sidewalk and re- redo that area. Okay, so that there will be a continuous way for people to. Yes. Not walk on the road. Yes, yes, okay, cool, that's all I need to know, thank you.
Rachel?
Oh, Pauline's, Pauline raises her hand.
What, between when and where?
We'll, we'll just give her a chance and then you can come back, um, Pauline?
Thank you, Rachel, I was gonna let you go first, but I only have a few questions, um, Mr. Krantz. The, and they pertain to special conditions.
Okay.
Um. I understand the granite bounds were removed because this is not a subdivision. I think granite bounds would be better, but that's just my opinion. I'm curious why special condition number thirteen. Um, was removed and if I missed it, I apologize, but I just don't remember hearing your discussion on that.
Yeah, so I did, I did briefly go over it, um, that section is being removed because the applicant is actually gonna use. Waddles and silt fence to do the entire limit of work, so that addresses that concern.
Okay, um, special condition originally sixteen point one five. Mentions lip and LAU, um, designation, this is not a forty B, so. Lip doesn't apply, am I correct on that?
No, that's not correct, lip is.
Okay.
Local, uh, it's a local initiative, uh, um, so these are just designations because these are inclusionary housing. So it's.
Right.
It's the local ones, forty B is a, is a different animal.
Absolutely, and I understand that, not to interrupt, I just wanna move on, if it doesn't apply here, that's good, I know what. They both mean, having worked with um, Habitat for so long, I just wanted to understand why it was in here. So I pro- I appreciate that, thank you Danny, and then. Um. Two things that concern me as just a resident, I'm less than a quarter mile from this development. But that is not my concern, more concerned for what is going on. Construction period is seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and I forget what it is on. Saturdays, it's a little bit less, does the planning board not have ability to. Modify that construction period?
Um, so that is what is allowed within our bylaw, I know that this was a question that was brought up. Uh, uh, for Stratton Hill as well, um, Pauline, um, the applicant on that one agreed to uh, different hours. Um, but on this one, the applicant has not.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, and I just wanna clarify this to the record. The applicant refuses to stop work before seven PM?
That's not what I stated.
All right, say it again, please.
The allowed hours in our bylaw are seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday. On Saturday, it's eight AM to three PM, that's what's allowed under the town's regulations.
And the applicant is working within that.
Correct.
You're just stating that a different project had something different, which is.
I'm sorry, who is speaking?
Julie, your favorite planning board member, Julie Murray.
No, thank you, Julie.
That's okay. I'll wave.
I waved back.
I, so I'm just saying that, that he was actually, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak for you, but I got, I felt, I, I was, okay, I'll let Danny, nevermind. They, the applicant is just adhering to the laws as written.
Yeah.
Full stop, we were just referencing a different project that had, you had been at, Pauline, so you had heard the applicant had. On that project had done something different, but this one is adhering to the laws.
I understand that, Julie, I understand that, planning board, but has the applicant been asked? To limit their work to maybe five PM?
So the, the, the board does not have the ability to ask for that? Um, that is above what we can do?
All right then, may I ask Ms. Field, who is on Zoom, if she would. Uh, comment?
Mister Chair, I feel it's an unfair question and I would like us to stick to the laws as written.
I agree.
We can go to town meeting if we'd like to change our laws.
All right, fine, so I'll move on to blasting, same question. Eight AM to three PM, Monday through Friday, is there no consideration given? To when the school buses go up and down Grotton Harvard Road?
Um, we're, I'm actually gonna have uh, the chief come up and discuss this cuz uh, I actually had a conversation with him about this.
Yeah, so.
Perfect, thank you, cuz I have another question on that point.
Okay, thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, as Danny spoke to, uh, we had a conversation about this where eight to two was talked about. And in discussion with both myself and the Fire Prevention Office, if you limit that time to eight to two, it's gonna drag blasting out. For a longer period of time, and we felt generally speaking, as, and I can't speak for the blasting industry, but having. Done that as a fire detail, they generally finish blasting by two PM anyways, because at the tail end of the day. If something doesn't go off, they own it, they have to sit on it, so generally by early afternoon, the blasting part of it's done. So we felt comfortable in our discussions, if you give them till three, then if something ran a little late that particular day, that gives them the windows to finish up, otherwise. You shorten the day up from three blast to two, it just prolongs that period of time they would be blasting, so that was the reason we did that.
And what about a question about the timing regarding uh, school buses?
I I felt comfortable, like we figured in our discussions, high schoolers get out early, I'm not sure of the time, and I have children that age, appropriate, but. Uh, say the elementary school kids and younger get out later in the day, so we figured by three PM, they would be for sure. You know, wrapped up by the end of the day, you know, you know, three o'clock, we felt comfortable with that from the, the, the fire department end. And and it gives them enough time to do their job without prolonging the blasting part of it more. I think if I remember correctly, you said maybe a monthish, I can see that dragging out to maybe a month and a half if you shorten that day up for them. Was there any other questions from me, Pauline?
Oh, thank you, Tim, I appreciate your input, I am just commenting based on one of my neighbors. Uh, comments maybe two meetings ago, where his daughter travels on the school bus at two PM. Down Grotton Harvard Road, and I know she does because I see her get off most afternoons. And maybe we should just look at that timeframe again. Um, I just don't want children to be impacted, adults are bad enough, all right? And that's my only concern. What's my point?
No, we got your point, I said, that's.
Oh, well, thank you, Mister Krantz, I appreciate that, so may I ask Tim another question?
Ask it.
I have done some research on other projects. Uh, Chief, are you okay with the cul-de-sac turnaround for your vehicles in the event of an emergency? I have not seen a report from you since the final project has been submitted.
Mister Chair, um, we did uh, submit that when the plan was originally submitted to the planning board, which. Um, we give them a longest wheelbase, which is our latter truck, and they indicated that. Um, we would either be able to turn around or back up uh, without making an extreme effort to do that. We haven't heard any difference, so we're going on the fact that they got that, and uh, we feel comfortable with that moving forward.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, you done, Pauline?
I am, thank you.
Rachel?
I just, uh, with regard to, um, the, uh, in the special conditions regarding, uh. The holder of the conservation restriction and the holder of the land.
Mm hmm.
I was just wondering, um, if, um. The condominium association, I know that that will be addressed further down the road.
Mm hmm.
Um, but I know that there's been difficulty with regard to, I'm not sure how condominium associations and HOAs.
I I muted her.
Okay, um, how uh, condominium associations and HOAs differ. But there had been some difficulty and some sticky legislation with regard to the different covens expiring. Um, at certain points in time, or, um. Uh, I guess my question is, who takes on the responsibility, I guess, of maybe, you know, the land that's there, but then also. Um, all of the requirements that go within the documents, um. You know, the responsibility of the condominium association with regard to upkeep and maintenance and all of that, um, is. Is there restrictions on um, condominium associations, is there uh, long-term solutions if. Per se, that the condominium association goes out of, goes bankrupt, or there's not enough people that live there? Or, I don't know, if something happens to the conservation commission, um.
So, you're, I mean, you're, you're asking a lot of questions, uh, let's just, let me just address these in a, in a couple of uh, steps first. So in terms of condominiums associations, the way they work, those are deeds that are recorded. So those are in perpetuity, those, those don't change, those don't run out, none of that does. Condominium documents, there's a master deed and then there's condominium documents that are recorded with the master deed, which are just a set of rules. Of what the master deed condominium must follow. The condominium association is what, it, um, either the applicant. If he had, they have not turned it over to the trustees yet. If they have, the trustees are the ones who enforce the condominium documents. And so the trustees are, will govern the um, maintenance and all of the um, restrictions of it.
Okay, thank you, um, and then to actually touch upon, um, Pauline's point of the construction times. I understand that they're written in the um, bylaws, but, um. I just, uh, I don't understand how Stratton Hill was able to modify their times. Was that something that was worked into the agreement?
They, they suggested.
They just said that's what their work hours are and they just want to let us know if they have amended workout.
Okay, I was just, um, you know, this is going to be three years or so of construction, so I was just curious as to how that worked out.
Yeah, it was, it was them that suggested.
That's very good, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments on the Zoom?
Nope.
I don't see any other.
So, we can go to motions, right?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Let me just make sure I pull mine up properly, um, so.
How many special conditions do we have now?
I think there's forty-two.
Forty-two, I just wanna make sure I have this written correctly, uh, which one are you on right now?
You wanna do the major stone mortar first?
Okay.
So for the major stone mortar management approval, I make a motion for approval of the site plan pursuant to subsection two forty-five dash five and six. Stormwater management of air general bylaws, subject to the standard conditions one through thirty-five. And special conditions numbered one through forty-two in this decision.
Seconded.
Any discussion, hearing none?
Yeah, so just for clarification, the moment includes the amendments made today in the draft.
Yep, in this decision and the following conditions presented at this meeting, so all the amendments, yeah.
Okay, Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. The open space residential development site plan approval, inclusionary housing. I make a motion for approval of the site plan pursuant to subsection three twenty dash ten point one point two B, open space residential development. And subsection three twenty dash three five, site plan review of the Arizona bylaw, subject to the standard conditions one through thirty-six. And special conditions numbered one through forty-two in this decision and whatever amendments made at this meeting.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken, how do you vote?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, and motion to close the public.
I make a motion to close the public hearing for, uh. I make a motion to close the public hearing for, uh, zero High Street and thirty-eight Groton Harvard Road, Lincoln Hills.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
Okay. You're done.
We are done. We wish the.
So I will, um, I'll get these, um, edits done, um, and then I will reach out to Jonathan, uh, tomorrow at some point or the next day, and then, um, have him sign it, it'll get stamped in with the town clerk, and then I will send, uh, you a copy, Janet, and then the stamped copy will be posted on the website as well.
I have a procedural question?
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Just cuz I've tried to read through all the bylaws, and we're now in that twenty-day ticking clock. Um, I can't find how appeals in the bylaws are processed at all, and I'm wondering if the board or if you're could, could, uh, could go over that process for us.
Yeah, so there's, uh, basically the way it works is, um, there is a, um, uh, a, there's a form that gets filled out, um, uh, issuing basically saying that you're going to appeal this, you have to have an attorney, um, do all that work. Um, you, uh, submit it to the town clerk and a copy to me, it then goes through the court system at that point.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And, and one, one clarification as well, when that appeal process, if you appeal the project, you also will need to, the initial step is to show standing, and then from there, it's hiring your own engineers and, um, uh, professionals to prove, disprove.
Depends on what I'm appealing, right?
Yeah, correct.
Like, I wanna appeal the waiver request, and I'm willing to do it legal for the trees, so that's, that's my plan.
Okay. Um, projects as updates?
Yes. All right.
So I have one, one question.
Sir?
Yep. I, and they signed their cover on Harvard Road. Um, so basically, now that this is no public hearings, when will this start, cuz we just went. Yes, so the project, once I finalize the document, I'll have Jonathan sign it. Yep. And then it gets, um, I'll have it stamped in with the town clerk, there's a twenty-day appeal period. So, and based what I'm hearing, that there is going to be an appeal. Right. Um, basically what happens is, once that gets appealed, eh, there's a stay on the project until that appeal is dealt with. Okay, cuz, would, like you, like you know, we still haven't, and I don't want anything happening up there with the, especially with the, uh, the spring right around the corner. Well, they would still be able to start projects. So if we're underwater, then who do we go to, to? To me. Okay. We, we will, the, the whole thing was, the planning board correctly stated that they cannot enforce, um, the DPW to do something that is off-site. That's why the DPW is working to expedite that as quickly as we can. Okay, so, so if, i- if, you know, God forbid, we're, uh, we're underwater, we come to you and you. Um, I will, me and the DPW will do what we can to address that concern. So is there, so, all right, so you guys will handle anything if anything goes wrong? I'm not gonna make that, not saying that. I'm just saying that, you know, it's, I, I'm.
That's my question, you came into the last meeting.
Yes, cuz I, I wasn't.
You suggested to the DPW that they help you out.
Yes.
They took that suggestion, they're hiring an engineer to survey your land, they're putting in, they're, they're doing a lot of steps.
Yes.
You don't feel that that's moving?
It, it is moving, just I don't want, I, I, but nobody has come onto our site to look at it or survey it, and, and then if they're gonna be starting to do this, and there's a, and we've already had issues with water in the past, and now we're, you know, removing trees and, and the, and it's, and, uh, we don't have that thing in thirty-eight Groton Harvard Road now, so all that water that they're gonna be doing is coming right to our property. And, and that's the, that's where. During construction, there's a temporary settling basin that will hold back water, that's what was. That's my biggest concern, is that. Yeah, we did, we, so during the, um. Cuz if this starts and all of a sudden, we're getting influx of water, and we don't have that channel, it's all gonna be blocked. Yeah, no, that's not gonna happen, so during construction. That's my biggest concern. Understandable, during construction, there's a temporary settling basin, which will handle stormwater that comes off from the site that's being constructed, that water's gonna be held back, um, and it's gonna go over time, so the settling basin and the stormwater stuff are gonna be the first.
Thing that gets pulled, put in before, um, you know, any building or any of that occurs.
Perfect, okay, so I, that was my biggest thing, cuz, um, uh, we've already, we've already had a lot of water, I mean, that's why we put in the generator. Yep, understandable. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Um, so Stratton Hill, um, the applicant, uh, did reach out to me, uh, regarding, um, the project. They have been in discussions with, um, uh, National Grid. Uh, they want to put a gravel access extending to the parking area. Um, there's currently already a gravel way, but they're gonna just extend it to the parking area, that's just abutting the open space area. At the top. And, yep, at the top, and put a, um, gate there so that, um, they can still go in and out of the site for National Grid. Okay. Um, that's something that they're, they reached out to us to see if the board, um, felt like that was gonna be an issue.
Inter-minors.
It doesn't, doesn't, it's not a site plan modification.
No, it's, it's more to address, uh, National Grid's concern, I don't think it's a major modification or even a minor, it's something that's just, it's alr, there's already an existing driveway, uh, gravel way, they're just gonna extend, uh, move it towards the, um, new proposed, uh, parking area.
So originally, we talked about that, there was only a trail.
Yeah.
It was like a good walking trail.
But yeah.
I'm talking, you, you guys have been up there, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, you, you've seen that National Grid is, you know, they've given them access to the whole project in the back.
Yep.
Substantially different up there than in the National Grid. Uh, right away.
Yeah, they've done a big, they've done a lot.
A lot of construction by National Grid.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then, um, I know the board also discussed that they want to do a, um, uh, a, so it's a follow-up, like a site walk with the, with them, um, so I will, um, reach out to the applicant, um, and then at that point, we can set up doing, if the board wants to do a full board, or if you guys wanna do it in kind of, um, uh, groups of two.
I'd rather.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd rather the full board, I don't wanna burden.
Okay, so then we can, and then I'll just have to set up a, a, a site, uh, of, of, an agenda.
Preferably before it gets bone cold.
Yep, okay, we'll do.
Good, I mean typically, we've been doing Thursdays at eight, it seemed to be the most.
I can ask for that and see what they can do.
Possible.
Um, but I just wanna make sure I have clearance from the board as to work on that, because we typically ask for site visits in a public hearing, but this doesn't have a public hearing, it's a project that's already ongoing, so, um, I wanna discuss it in the public. Um, so forty-two Park Street, we did receive their finalized builds, um, we are, I have, we haven't had a chance to go out there and do the final inspections on that, I know they're still also working on stuff for final COs as well, so, um, Matt, myself, and Heather will go out there, do a site walk on that, and then have the board as well go out there and do that.
So currently, they have a temporary CO for the, uh, business portion of the building?
Mm-hmm.
And no COs for the residential portion, is that right? The whole building is temporary CO.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's activity in the second floor.
Wow. Cuz, all right.
Pine Street?
Look.
Go ahead.
There's no such thing as a temporary CO, is there, in the real world? I mean, I guess you can give one out, but there's no code.
I mean, temporary COs, you see, uh, you see temporary COs everywhere, oh.
Right, but they're, you're okay.
I agree, I, but it was already issued, the.
All right, got it.
But yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Pine Street, so, we had the pre-construction meeting, they're actually going to be, um, starting to, uh, they submitted for their NFT's permit. They're hoping to get that back and then start, the NFT's permit is the.
No, 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 I can't remember Pine Street, which one is that?
Um, the third street.
Oh, third street, gotcha, yep, got it.
They, uh, submitted for their NFT's permit, they are waiting, they're in the, they're in the middle of the fourteen-day review period. Once they get that, um, approval, they're gonna start cutting down trees, um, but they have everything all set up and they're just waiting.
Beautiful. All right, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for approval of the September ninth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as, uh, with the ads I submitted this week.
Seconded.
Any discussion, hearing none, Ken?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Julie?
Yes.
Chair votes aye. Motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Some move.
Good night, everyone, thank you.